Seven o'clock and I will call the August ninth, 2021, school board meeting to order. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Anita, if you would do the roll call, please.
Brian Wopat.
He is excused.
Emily Zach.
Here.
Jennifer Deek.
Here.
Gary Dunlap.
Here.
Cheryl Hancock.
Here.
I am here.
Chris Lau.
Here.
And Rebecca Reber.
Here.
Okay, with six of the seven school board members present, I would declare a quorum, approval of the agenda. I would note that the agenda has been posted, distributed, and sent to the local media. With this in mind, are there any changes? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as published.
So move.
Chris, is there a second?
I'll second.
Anita, okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve the agenda as published. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Public participation. We do have a few people who have filled out the card for public participation this evening. I will begin with Patrick Barlow, who would like to speak about COVID mitigations.
Good evening. Patrick Barlow, 907 Dana Lane. I'm tempted to recall the words of Shakespeare in Henry V, when King Henry exhorts the soldiers to battle by saying, "Once more unto the breach, dear friends." Our nation, our state, and our local community again face the challenges presented by the COVID-19 virus, especially the Delta variant. We thought we were out of the woods, and that high levels of vaccinations may make thoughts of mitigation fall into the past, but what is becoming clear is that we are at best served by returning to the mitigation strategies like masking and social distancing to help deal with this more infectious variant. I would urge the board and administration to consider that none of the students under age 12 are able to get vaccinated, and only half of the state of Wisconsin residents are fully vaccinated. There are many who are unwilling or unable to get vaccinated, or who have medical conditions that make them immunocompromised. Once again, we're being directed by health professionals at all levels to do a simple act like wearing a mask to show our care and concern for others in order to deal with this virus. The only difference now is that we have examples in the states of Florida and Texas, where hospitals are overwhelmed with patients, including a number of children, that add a burden of responsibility upon us to not follow their poor policy examples. Rates are increasing in Wisconsin as well. This is now where any of us wish to be. We've had weeks of more freedom, believing vaccination rates provided a protective factor, allowing the world to open up. But closer study of this variant, variant and its effects, present a picture that we need to keep the safety of the whole community and our kids in mind. We are in a different situation and different place right now. So following on guidance even within the last few weeks from the CDC and the Mayo Clinic, one of our major health providers in the region, we should return to masking and social distancing and create access to the testing that will allow the district to manage outbreaks and keep all members of the district school safer. This also requires appropriate contact tracing, and I believe quarantining or isolation. We just can't wish this situation away. To preserve our ability for keeping face-to-face learning in place, we need to adapt to the return of these mitigation practices. I'm hopeful that your past practice of this board and the administration of following the science, factoring in the needs of all constituencies, and finding the path to manage this situation will continue to be your approach to dealing with this new variant. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, I have Tiffany Lee, who would like to speak about COVID safety. Did I pronounce your last name correctly?
You did. It's Leanne.
Leanne.
That's pretty close.
Thank you. And I should mention that you have five minutes, and Anita is keeping time, and she will signal you if you approach that, okay?
I promise, this is not the whole book I'm reading. It's just one page in here.
All right, thank you.
So I'm Tiffany Lee. I am a mom here at Holman, and I do have three adventurous boys. Eli is going to be in first grade, and he was at Viking and kindergarten last year. We've got two kiddos that will be in the school district coming up shortly. And just for a minute, I want us all to take back and think back to our first day of kindergarten, whether it was you or your kiddos. You're excited about a new school, new friends, riding the bus, eating lunch, gym class, all of those first things for a first time at kiddo going to school, whether that's art class or recess. And now let's think back to the start of 2020 for those kindergarteners. We didn't have a bus, we didn't have friends, we didn't have in-contact people. It was nothing like we were used to. You might have had a new backpack, but you didn't actually get to take it anywhere. We all know the start of 2020 was so different for our kids and all of the faculty and staff and others that also work in the district. And as a parent, we tried our best to keep our kid engaged in virtual school. We read all of the Googling, best practices in parenting. Let's make it fun. Let's talk about, we get to do school, we get to see your friends, we get to see your teacher. We barely survived the first week of virtual school. I was able to be home with my child, working next to him, and school made him very anxious. We noticed that he started hiding under the table. He would wander off to the bathroom when the teacher would start to call on kids. It was not a good fit for him. And like you've seen, working with and working with the teachers, it's not a good fit for a lot of kids. And we also recognize that we were fortunate. I was able to stay home with them when a lot of kids didn't have appropriate childcare or safe places to be. We had access to high-speed internet. We had access to healthy and affordable foods for him while he was at home. And we know that that's not the case for all of our families. So I do fully support that schools. So my ask would be that schools do fully reopen. We know that kids learn best when they're in the classroom. You all have seen that as well. But we need to do it safely. And we know that following appropriate COVID safety protocols will help keep our kids safe in school and help keep schools open for the long run. We know that this bouncing back and forth is not good for the kids, it's not good for the teachers, it's not good for the faculty and staff. So we need to do what we can to keep schools open and keep them open safely. The school district must adopt the best practices established by the CDC, the American Academy of Pediatrics, and state and local health departments. We need to all work together to keep our kids safe, to keep our staff and teachers safe, and to keep our community safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Kristy Stralo, and she is here to speak about masking as well.
Hi, I'm Kristy Stralo, and I have four kids in the school district of Holman. They've all been coming to Holman School since they were in 4K, and we've had great experiences. I have long COVID. I got COVID 20 months ago, and I haven't recovered. It was before we knew it was here, before we knew any of the strategies to mitigate transmission. I have a cane and a disability parking permit that I can use on my lower functioning days. There are days that I'm completely housebound. Even on a better day, I can't walk more than 3,000 steps in a day, and those of you with tracking watches know how few that actually is. My son caught COVID at 12 years old, and he had symptoms for eight months. And had it been a normal year, he wouldn't have been able to play the sports that he loves. I think his symptoms are gone now, but I guess we won't know if they're going to rear their head again someday later. I'm terrified of kids getting what I have and losing so much of their childhood. I want schools to be open, but if we do that, we need to look at the Swiss cheese model and not remove so many of the slices. I would love for kids to be able to sit on the carpet and listen to their teacher read a story, but in order to do that, I think we need masks. I have three kids that are too young to be vaccinated. We know that masks do a lot to prevent transmission. Until my kids are able to be vaccinated, as well as the other kids of the school district, I ask that you help me to protect them. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Tony Zach, and speaking about masks optional.
Thank you. I'm Tony Zach. It's nice to see everybody's faces right now. It is. You can smile. It's all right. All right. Not knocking a smile. Chris doesn't want me to smile. All right. So hey, I'm, I live at 808 Winchester Lane. Been here before. Just a few words from Josh Newman. He wasn't able to get on the, on the agenda here. What Josh has to say is, "I want to thank you for navigating this tough situation. I applaud your decision for not requiring masks this upcoming school year." I only have two sentences to share. First, according to the CDC, students under 18 have a higher death rate from the seasonal flu than COVID-19. Second, by now, every teacher, faculty, and student have had the opportunity to be vaccinated. For this reason, there is no scientific reason to require the masking of our children." That's from Josh Newman, who was sitting in the back with his wife. I just, I just learned about coming here because there were some people that were going to be talking about bringing the masks back. I, I too applaud this, this board and the faculty for keeping the masks optional. Masks are a, basically, this is, this is about our freedom. We have the choice to wear a mask or not. We have a choice to get a vaccine or not. This is the United States of America. We live in this country, and we have freedoms. You guys are doing the right thing by making these masks optional. If somebody wants to go get their children vaccinated over the age of 12, that is totally up to them. If they don't want to have their children vaccinated, or if their children decide that they don't want to get vaccinated, that's, that's up to them. That's freedom that we have. So I heard about, Pat brought up Florida. Florida actually happens to fall in the middle of the pack in the United States for COVID-19-related deaths. What you hear in the media is, is probably something other than that. Actually, Florida is a model to what, what we should be doing, and they are not requiring their children have masks. Teachers and the kids 12 years older can get, they, they have the option of getting that, that vaccine. That is totally their freedom and their right to do. And let's, let's think about, what about the people that have already come down with COVID and have the natural immunities that, that, that help you so you don't get sick? So I'm here to say that I think that masks should be optional in school. I think that you guys should stand strong. Let's, let's talk about the numbers really quick. Seventy-five million children in that subgroup in the United States of America. How many of those children have died? Under 350. Under 350 out of 75 million. Not one child should die of anything. However, children die of pneumonia. That would be 800 children this last year that died of pneumonia. And we really don't talk about the flu much either, because apparently that's gone, and now COVID has taken its place. So our kids are not affected like adults are. That's a fact. These are facts. You can, you can look it up. I'm not a scientist, I'm not a doctor, but I read enough, and I know enough that masks should remain optional. Let us keep our freedoms, let our children keep their freedoms, and make that, keep that masking optional. Thank you very much.
The next is Chad Updike, and he wants to speak, "Support of the Leadership."
I'm Chad Updike, W5531 Olson Road. Really short, I, I was here to speak earlier this year about getting kids back in school, and then again about taking masks off our kids. And so I felt like it was, it wouldn't have been fair for me not to show up and thank the administration for the decision to make masking optional. I think it's the right decision, and I, I know it wasn't without a great deal of thought, and, and definitely pushback, and I'm sure there will still continue to be pushback the further we move into this. So thank you for your, for your leadership, and I hope it continues. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. And then next is Maggie Smith.
Hi, everyone. I'm Maggie Smith. I'm a new resident to Holman, and I am a mom to three small humans who are pretty jazzed to be joining this district. I'm also a public health professional with 11 years of experience in disease prevention, formerly at La Crosse County Health Department, the last 18 months of which were spent as the communications lead for the COVID-19 response. I recently accepted a job in adolescent health with the state. Before I go any further, I just want to say really honestly, a thank you to all of you and to all of these folks, and really to everybody in the buildings throughout the district, because I guarantee none of them thought that they were going to be listening to people talk about COVID for the last two years. From admin to nutrition services, classroom teachers, nurses, buildings, you guys have been placed in difficult and often thankless positions, and it is appreciated. Your dedication is noticed. The next thing that I want to do is to read an excerpt from the Holman Board Policy Number 710 on Communicable Disease. "The district shall follow recommendations by La Crosse Public Health Department, Wisconsin Department of Family, Health and Family Services, federal and state regulations and guidelines, along with the CDC guidelines, when taken into consideration the attendance or exclusion of school or student, of student or school employees who are diagnosed with or may have a communicable disease. Each and every one of those agencies, CDC, Department of Health Services, the local La Crosse County Health Department, as well as American Academy of Pediatrics, New Today, the DPI, the Department for Public Instruction, Gunderson, and Mayo, unanimously recommend following quarantine guidance as established by the local health department and requiring masks. Not following those guidelines puts staff, students, and their families at unnecessary risk. Those who are immunocompromised or living with a health condition are at even greater risk. And layered mitigation strategies that are developed contrary to the guidance of experts do not create a safe learning environment. We know, I think the one thing everybody in the room probably agrees on, is that in-person learning is best for students, their families, and staff. We should be doing everything we can to help learners remain healthy, safe, and in the classroom. I try to imagine needing this discussion for any other communicable disease. If there was an outbreak of E. coli or measles, would the district operate contrary to those experts? If enough parents complained, would we discontinue other health and safety practices? Maybe we don't wear shoes, or wash our hands, or cook our food to temp? And to be clear, I'm not here to ask that you listen to me. My opinion doesn't matter. The school district of Holman should set aside conjecture, politics, and opinions, and follow the guidance set by local, state, and national public health experts as it stands now and in the future. Thanks for your time."
Thank you, Maggie. And I believe that wraps it up for public participation. Then moving on to recognition, and thank you, Dr. Mueller.
Yeah, good evening. We have one recognition tonight, and that is, our Holman Area Foundation has partnered with our school district, and they put on and hosted the 21st Annual Mike Schmitz Memorial Golf Outing here. It was on June, June 16th. And so I would like to introduce Lisa Kind and Jennifer Wesley to come up, and they have a check to present to the school district. And Mr. Englerth, Mr. Sackett, come on up, and Board President Cheryl Hancock, and we'll get a photo op. So we just thank you for all your efforts, and we know this is not easy to put together, and I am excited to share. You can see the amount on there is over $7,000. So we thank you very much.
You said 21st year?
Yes.
Yeah, that's awesome.
21st year.
Yep. I remember when it first began, so that's very awesome. Thank you so very much to the foundation for your continued support amongst other things. Reports and discussion. Then Dr. Mueller will share the return to school plans.
Yeah, so.
And her crew.
Yeah, so with me tonight, this is definitely a team effort in that. It's not an easy task putting together these return to school plans, because they are much different. And we'll just say, in education, they don't train you for this. So anyways, with me tonight, this is our COVID response team in that, so I just wanted to, they are behind the scenes doing much of our work, not much, the majority of the work behind the scenes, especially this past year and a half. And I just wanted to recognize them for that. So we have Matt Myers, he's our Director of Student Services, and then Jill Mason, our Executive Director of Student Services, and Melissa Kates, our Director of Human Resources. So they've spent many hours, and Ben ha, have had a lot of direct, hands-on experience in working with many agencies and in this work. So that will, will each be sharing some information this evening. So with that, so tonight, we are going to share our in-person return to school plan for the 2122 school year. As you can see, there are many different perspectives as to how the plan should look. We can listen and learn from all these perspectives as we develop our plans. It is our responsibility to create the best plan to give as many students, as many school and extracurricular experiences as possible. Kind of like last year, that was our, our goal. One thing we do know is we can't control the virus. Thus, you will see our plan is designed to be responsive to the local and school-based conditions. Even though school does not start until September 1st, there are many activities already beginning. So as a school system, we take all the guidance and recommendations to create a plan that best fits our purpose of educating our students in healthy environments. So therefore, our goal is to keep as many students in person to the greatest extent. So that's kind of the foundation of our presentation. So tonight, we have three outcomes that, for the presentation here, we will share how planning considerations came about and shaped decisions from our past experiences. We have been living, as we all know, within the COVID environment for almost a year and a half now, and have had, had lots of experiences in our school settings. We also want everyone to leave understanding our implementation plan and how we're going to go about. You've heard about the Swiss cheese and the multiple layers of mitigation, and our community's speaking it now too, which is wonderful. And we'll talk a little bit about that. And then, like we've been saying, we can't control the virus, but we can adapt and be flexible to respond to conditions. So we will share how we will go about that and how we will make those. So basically, our agenda has three items on it. The mitigation, we'll review the mitigation strategies and our multi-layered approach and where we're at and, and kind of what that will look like. An explanation of how we plan to monitor our conditions and what data sources will help inform those. And then also just a review, we will continue our district dashboard, but then also, there's much other, there's other pieces of internal data that we are actually reviewing even now, as we have some activities happening in our district and have had activities going on all summer in our district, and to help explain adjustments needed in the plan.
All right. So as you all know, we do have a multi-layered approach to mitigation strategies. This is the, the multi-layered approach we used last year. So as you can see, we have face coverings and physical distancing, good hand washing hygiene, increased ventilation, disinfecting, and we put all of those together in the Swiss cheese model. So then over the summer, we had, we were able to bring our summer programs back in person, so we're excited about that. We had a really good turnout. At the end of the school year, prior to the start of the summer programming, we did make masks optional, except for our transportation. There is a federal mandate right now that on buses or any of our transportation, we are required to wear masks. Our summer programming spanned from mid-June, and our high school programs will end on Thursday. Thus far, we have no reported school-based exposures. And the factors that could have contributed, contributed to the success are lower community case rates and smaller number of students in our buildings. So this is our current approach to our mitigation strategies. We're currently going to have masks optional, except for our buses, which are, again, federally mandated. As we know, COVID progress is not linear. I wish it was. As local and school-specific conditions change, we will continue to discuss the need for specific populations of students to wear masks. We continue to emphasize the investments the district has made to improve air ventilation and filtration. Among the enhancements are the MERV 13 filters, mechanical air handling, and internal and external testing of air exchange rates. We will continue to focus on our cleaning protocols and good hand washing hygiene as well. One of our most effective mitigation strategies will be continuing to stay home when you're ill and seek testing. We encourage you to review the symptoms listed above, and based on the current La Crosse County Health Department data that we review, the most common symptoms are cough, fever, and chills. A little bit about quarantine and isolation. Again, the best thing is stay home if you're ill. Our nurses are amazing. They have been with us this whole process. If you have any questions about a child's symptoms or concern about what to do, please call them, and they can definitely talk through the situation with you. When we look at close contacts, our school-based data from last year indicated that a majority of cases came from household contacts. Our data also showed that the majority of our school-based close contacts did not contract COVID during their quarantine period. With adopting the shortened quarantine in late spring, we were not perfectly in alignment with public health, and we did not see increased transmission in school. We did see an increase in the amount of students seeking testing as close contacts to return to school and activities quicker. We will still contact trace for positive cases. Close contacts will be notified to closely monitor health for development of any symptoms, but asymptomatic close contacts will not be required to quarantine. This is an area we continue to analyze with our current co-curricular activities to inform future decisions. At times of increased COVID activity in our schools and in other areas in the country in the spring, transmission could be traced back to co-curricular experiences, and this will be an area of critical surveillance prior to the start of our school year. So we will be able to use that data to inform decisions moving forward. There are some exemptions to quarantine as well. Fully vaccinated household contacts, students and staff with no symptoms do not need to quarantine after exposure. Currently, only students age 12 and above are eligible. You can, if you have received vaccination, you can bring a copy of your vac, or bring your vaccination card, and we'll make a copy of that. Or you can bring a copy of the Wisconsin Immunization Registry printout. At the high school, you can send that to Nurse Nicole Craig. At the middle school, you can send that to Nurse Angie Helgett Widow. If you're interested, there are local clinics and vaccinators have walk-in appointments for the Pfizer vaccine. And students and staff with positive COVID-19 PCR test, or who had a positive antigen test while symptomatic within the last 90 days and do not have symptoms will not need to quarantine.
As Dr. Mueller mentioned, our plan remains flecked.
18 months throughout the pandemic. We monitor a lot of information and then try to synthesize that to make the best policies and procedures for our district. One of the things we're looking at is community spread. You've heard a lot of participation tonight and information from us that, that looks a lot different for us now than it did on July 1st. And that's a, a thing that, something that we're monitoring really closely right now to determine if we need to change course or alter our plan. When we look at health system capacity, we listen to the experts, review their data, and appreciate their messaging that helps us understand the burden that they're experiencing. As far as vaccination coverage, we're proud that we're the highest school district boundary in our area, but recognize that there's still work to be done. In some rough calculations since 8-4, we're proud again to say that our school district boundary vaccination rates, just looking at the raw numbers, have risen 1.4% in those who have started their series to currently be 65.5%. And 1.2% in those who have completed the series, 63%. So excited about that and then certainly wish it could happen a lot quicker and a lot more. We also know that Gunderson today reported they were up 32% at their Onalaska clinic and the county went from 829 doses in the week of 8-1 to now 986 doses during the week of 8-8. So again, good improvements and we'd hope to see more. We also want to be aware of early detection of COVID-19 increases. So Jill brought up an excellent point about closely surveilling our co-curricular programs right now so that we know what's going on with the student populations that we do have accessing our facilities and services. We have also opted into the K-12 COVID testing program with the Department of Health Services, and this will hopefully allow us to diagnose cases and quickly determine those who may have been exposed. One of the things that the structure of a school is set up to do is we have quick access to student schedules, student seating arrangements, student co-curricular activities. Sometimes we contact trace a little bit too fast and we have to remind ourselves to slow down and get the information accurately and make sure that we have all the details. But schools are uniquely positioned to be able to do that work very quickly. The optional testing program is something that's completed with parent consent, but we hope this will help us remove barriers to testing for any families that experience them. Friday night, I was about done with work and it was 6 o'clock and I was excited at Friday at 6 o'clock to be doing something work-related because we had gotten an email from our testing vendor that we were going to be able to set up our meeting next week. So that's a program that we're really excited about. And then we also want to look at our populations at risk and that's areas right now where we're doing critically planning if individualized mitigation strategies need to be in place. We also utilize our district dashboard as a source to convey information to the public. There's our current, a snip of our current dashboard. You'll see that we have two active cases, neither of which resulted in school-based exposures, but we do report any case that involves our students that's reported to us. Over the course of the pandemic, we've had 350 recovered cases and you can see where students may have been required to quarantine by building there. There's a lot of work going on in the dashboard now to make sure we can communicate information accurately and that we're making it as clear as possible for people to understand the conditions that our district is experiencing. And we'll, right now, we're posting snips and screenshots of the dashboard, but we'll have that live back as the start of the school year approaches. Just mentioned about the dashboard, again, just to reiterate, we reflect all, all cases that we know about, we report on our dashboard. It doesn't necessarily mean that there's One more. Yeah. The real work of the dashboard is the behind-the-scenes work that we do. So again, schools are uniquely positioned for this. Each building nurse and health assistant inputs information which helps us to update the dashboard. The building nurse, the school principal, and a COVID response team analyze data throughout the day to determine if connectors exist between cases or symptomatic students. Connectors is a term our friends in public health have taught us a lot about over the last couple of months, or over the last 18 months. That's things looking at if second grade class, we want to know if there's three students out and one has tested positive and another two have symptoms. Those are situations we're monitoring really closely at that point to determine if we need to take action within that specific class or cohort. Or we can even disaggregate that data down into school, classroom, co-curricular, or even busing trends. We have a school nurse team who Jill applauded earlier, and I want to continue to publicly do that, are nurses and health assistants who are in regular and frequent communication between each other. And then of course, we report our cases to the La Crosse County Health Department and identify if a potential outbreak scenario is occurring. And I want to again applaud our La Crosse County Health Department who's been instrumental in helping us analyze our data and inform decisions in those scenarios. As we look at our 2122 decisions, it's important to remember that 2020 and 2021 might not be the same, that we're looking at two different school years. And we do have different variants in our area that will impact our decision-making. So we will use public health data, guidance and resources, continue to communicate with our local and state school districts and community agencies to learn more about how their decisions are being informed and what decisions they're making. And then of course, we'll use our district data from our school-based programming occurring now, which includes our co-curricular activities and some limited summer school programs. We mentioned earlier, we're really excited about voluntary diagnostic testing for onsite diagnosis of cases. We're confident, because we've done this for a while, and a while being relative in terms of public health, but we're confident that we have the skills, strategies, and resources to be able to adapt to any change in conditions. And we want to continue to emphasize, as I've heard a couple times today, that protocol changes and progress are not linear and we need to accept our current reality.
I was thinking that was me, but you go right ahead.
He can sure talk about this if he'd like to, but that's all right. Thank you, Matt. So just in kind of finishing up the presentation here, you know, we're hopeful that we've entered into a different stage of the pandemic. But we must acknowledge the reality that we have seen an increase in COVID activity recently in our community. So what we're hearing, you know, through, from our health experts and from others is that, you know, the best mitigation strategy is vaccination. So me and the other superintendents the area did put out a press release not too long ago just saying, you know, if you're eligible, please consider being vaccinated. You know, speak with your doctor, ask about the risks and benefits of the vaccine. You know, low or no community spread will allow us to remain open with the fewest mitigation strategies necessary. And just, we know there's a lot of activities and events coming up. We have Corn Fest, the state fair is going on, you know, there's lots of activities that we all like to go to and be a part of. And just to be mindful of our choices in the next few weeks so that we can start school on a really positive note. And then it's really important, we really need to thank our staff and our families. I think of this past year and a half and as we enter into this next school year, I look back and our staff, they are unbelievable. They, they have proven time and time again that they can adjust, they are flexible, and they can rise to the challenge of a pandemic. I think of all the different things they did this past year. You know, you have to teach with masks. Okay, we'll do that. We're going to prepare meals. We'll deliver them even in snowstorms. We'll get the meals to the families. We'll provide the care that the kids need. We'll clean, we'll clean three times, four times, every hour, every 15 minutes. They're doing these things, our staff. They have gone above and beyond and learned how to do these new protocols and implemented them successfully as to why even last year, I think back, when we came back to school, the, the COVID picture wasn't, you know, as positive as we would have liked. But because of all these actions that our staff had taken in our school setting, we were successfully able to come back in person and, and stay in person for the remainder of the year. So I just want to thank them. And then definitely need to thank the families, just by them responding and to the community conditions, by staying home when they're ill. And many of them had to sacrifice a lot of personal experiences for the kids in our community and just thank them for that. And reporting their symptoms and working with our nurses was very helpful in that. So just want to thank our families for all that they have done and, and continue to do. And then just lastly, on, we, we do still have our COVID-19 information page on our district website and it has many information and it has resources on there. And then there's also an opportunity to give feedback, you know, as we continue our journey together. So just wanted to close with that. Then, so with that, if there's any questions by the board?
Any questions? I suspect there are a few.
I have, I have a question, maybe two. So I guess as you mentioned, the, the best mitigation strategy is vaccination. And then on your one slide on, of how your, your formula that you're using, you had high vaccination plus low community spread is basically leading you to the decisions that, that are being made. But for those that are 11 and under, there is no vaccination. So there is not a high vaccination in, in those grades. In fact, there's no vaccination. I think for those 12 and older, they are part of that, our community's high vaccination number and part of, part of the community for low spread. But I do, I guess, express concern for those 11 and other because they're, they're, they don't have the option to be vaccinated. And that is our best mitigation strategy. And I guess my follow-up question to that would be noticing what was in the Swiss cheese model and we're, what we're looking at now is why, why did we remove the social distancing aspect of it, especially for those 11 and under?
Sure. So we'll first speak to vaccination. And one of the things, I hear your concern, Jennifer, and that's why we're watching some of those community numbers really closely right now. I would say in terms of vaccination, what we want is more families to be vaccinated. When we looked at our, and reviewed our data from last year, one of the biggest risk factors, in fact, the single biggest risk factor for COVID transmission was a family member who had a COVID positive test. So any confirmed household contacts. That was where we saw the primary method of spread. We did not see a primary method of spread in terms of quarantining and isolating, or I'm sorry, quarantining specifically, our school-based close contacts. So that was kind of one of the factors that led to that decision. Now, when you start to think about high community case rates, then we're thinking about a level where it's more likely that we're introducing COVID into our environment, which may foretell a different decision as we approach school.
So what you're saying is that if community spread continues to increase, there may be a change in what the mitigation strategies are as we even approach the beginning of the school year?
All of our plans are flexible and designed to meet the conditions that not only our community, but our school district is experiencing.
Other questions?
I guess I, I struggle with the no masking because I, I want our district to follow the advice of health experts. And I don't feel like the no masking, especially for the younger grades, is following the advice of the experts. I'm just putting it out there and I'm sure I'll get blowback. But they don't, they don't have the, they don't have the layers of the vaccination and the, they don't have that opportunity. So I, that's the part I struggle with. Why are we not listening to that part of advice from the Centers for Disease Control, which by the way, are not a bunch of mad scientists making up things and implanting chips. They're, they actually, you know, study this their entire lives and dedicate their lives to health. So I, I guess I, I need some answers to that.
You go ahead and then I'll.
I can say that we are looking at all of those things. So again, part of our job is to look at all of those internal things, looking at, we, we don't have vaccination for our younger students. So when we taught, when I mentioned earlier, when we look at our protocols and our mitigation strategies, we may be looking at a specific population. What we've learned over the last year is that a one-size-fits-all is not necessarily the best way to go about things. We have to really analyze which areas, which schools, which buildings, which ages, and then, and then discuss what might be best. Because students age 12 and above are able to get vaccinated, we may not have to put in some of those systems in place. But we have to do that as a team and analyze where we are with community spread. So those are all the things with the increase that we've seen lately, that we have to go back and discuss about which mitigation strategies would be the best. Jennifer, I just want to also address, you mentioned social distancing. I don't have a precise answer for you as far as why we aren't doing it. I can tell you that we've received guidance last year, like for recess, all of those things. We have had really good success being outside, but from the inside, our kids are sitting, not necessarily exactly three feet apart, but they are, they're sitting away from each other. They might be sitting at the carpet. Our, our teachers are going to be very good at watching distancing. We do also have a lot of different things within the school that if teachers feel like they need them, we can implement those for them if they want. I don't want you to think that we've completely ignored everything that we know. We've used all of that to our advantage and really worked on what works for our students at, at the different levels. I don't know if you want to address anything?
No, I would just add to that, having a year of experience in a full school year, some of it being virtual, all of the supplies, all of the skills, those are things that we've learned. And I'm not going to say that it's as easy as flipping a switch, but when Dr. Mueller talked about our staff responsiveness, if we need to add a layer of mitigation, I'm confident that it can be done almost as quickly as flipping a switch. We are ready to go with those things. And that's why, as we mentioned, as we continue to look at that, this data, which looks like an upward trajectory right now, that we may be making a decision to bring some of those things back at a quicker pace.
Could I also just maybe have, have you guys point one thing out that you are looking at data? I know it's, it's vital that we hear from parents and students and get input from everyone, whether we agree, disagree, or just take it in. But ultimately, the decisions we make that affect everybody in the district, the staff, the community, and the kids, are not based on who emails the most or calls the most, although they're more than welcome to do those things. It's really based on data.
And, go ahead. Oh, and I was just going to say, we're not using any one mitigation or any one piece of data. We are looking at so many different pieces of information. And, you know, you talk about, you know, the CDC, it's a national organization and there's a lot going on in our nation. So they're going to give direct direction on what to do. So we're taking that. And then we're also looking at our local conditions and what's been going on in our schools and in our summer programs. And we have to really balance, you know, we had our summer programs run very successful and they, they had mask optional. Some kids are wearing them, some aren't. And very successful with that, knowing what the conditions were also. And as far as an educational setting in a learning environment, there's lots of positives too, that we had to balance with that health and healthy environment. So there's just a lot of pieces that go into these decisions. And in, in the thing that the community needs to know, and like you're saying, is we're monitoring it continuously, constantly. This team here, they didn't get much sleep last year. And I'm hoping that these conditions remain like they are so they can get some sleep this year because we are balancing that educational setting in the school setting and trying to make sure students can have every opportunity they need while keeping that healthy environment. And in a lot of that guidance, it says you need to also consider those local conditions, you know, versus just a statement. So hopefully that helps some.
So if La Crosse is requiring masking and they're looking at their local conditions, I assume, aren't those, because when we, when we were looking at all this last year, we took into account UWL kids and the La Crosse community when we looked at our mitigation strategies. So if they are requiring masking, wouldn't that flow into the Holman area also?
They're, they're, right now, they're looking at one piece of data in that. We also have Onalaska and West Salem and Galesville, and their plans align pretty closely with ours. So it, it just, even in, in Holman, we also, our vaccination rates are even different. So, you know, we, we have to communicate and watch closely.
I would just add, I think the other piece we've learned is that some in our community really appreciate when we can take our local data and even drill down and try to be as transparent as possible with our school district data. And we know a couple things. One is that sometimes communities can be reflectors, schools, I'm sorry, can be reflectors of their community data, which is why this trend of increased community COVID cases is so concerning to us and is something, as you mentioned, we're, we're watching really closely right now to analyze and, and inform our next set of decisions. So while we communicate that we have a plan for in-person return mitigation strategies to start the school year, the reality of the last 18 months is that that can change at, at the drop of a hat.
I also wanted to address, Anita, you asked about which data. We look at a variety of data. We look at our local La Crosse County Health data at case rates. We look at hospitalization rates. We look at K-12. That, we can even break it down on the La Crosse County Health Department website. They have, they're, we're able to break it down into a K-12 specific and watch, you know, where, that's, it's on the rise. You can see that data. We're looking at our state data. We're comparing that. We're very, we have learned that looking at our local data is extremely important. And by local data, I mean, how many cases do we have per building, per school, per building? We're looking at our state data, we're comparing that. We're very, we have learned that looking at our local data is extremely important. And by local data, I mean, how many cases do we have per building? Per school, per building, per classroom, per extracurricular activity, all of those types of things. And we can narrow that down. We are partners with our local health department. I know that we are not following all of their specific guidance, but they are a key to how we function here. We're on a first-name basis with the COVID Schools team. We work very closely. We've even had separate special meetings with them to talk about some specific things in our school district, how we can get kids back, do it safely. They knew we weren't in alignment with the shortened quarantine and with their recommendations, but we worked with them so that we could help. We called them right away when we started getting more kids testing. So we are in direct communication with our health department, and they are with us. We can't do this without each other, even though we have to run a school district and public health has to provide the public health expertise.
Other questions?
So I just know that, from what I have heard, is, again, it's confusing because all of last year, or I should say, the majority of last year, we were focusing on those recommendations from the CDC, the County Health Department, and Harvard, the Harvard model. But part of that plan was then, we would get to that stage where we would look primarily to the local data. And I think even the presentation still talks about the CDC or those health organizations. And that's confusing because it feels like we're ignoring them. But it has always been part of our plan to keep that in mind, but then look at that local data and what's happening within the buildings and within, you know, the community, that sort of thing. So I think it gets confusing to people as to why we're looking at this. And the variant, obviously, has thrown another thing in the cog in the wheel here. So that makes it difficult, and especially because of the unvaccinated number of people, the younger people, the case is increasing with the younger people. So it does get confusing. If you could go back in the presentation to where you talked about quarantining, and it refers to the vaccination, no, I think that was it. So there's so much out there about, you know, the vaccine, passport, and all that. And that's not what we're asking for. But if a family, if there is a case, and they can then show proof that there was, all their families vaccinated, they may be treated differently than if they don't show...
Yeah, so a student, yeah, exactly.
Student.
A student who is vaccinated could submit their card to Nicole or Angie or a copy of their wear record. Otherwise, we will follow unvaccinated protocols for what we've established for household contacts and quarantine.
So I think that's really key to emphasize because last year, when we were quarantining and we got in some issues where people didn't maybe understand or follow the whole thing. But if there is that potential need for quarantining, students who have been vaccinated will be treated differently than students who haven't. And it's not a discriminatory thing, it's just the fact that, of the vaccination.
Yeah, and I would think that that could be one factor that's driving, in our county, some of our 16 and 17-year-olds to seek vaccination at a higher rate than some of our younger students currently.
And can you tell me, someone mentioned the optional testing that we're looking at. How will that be utilized?
That's a great question. We're awaiting our meeting with our vendor, which, again, we're really excited about. But we anticipate that there could be a process where our staff or a lab staff collects four students whose parents have consented, have signed consent and agreed to that testing on the day of, that we could collect and do PCR testing. We believe that service would be that we collect the samples, and then a lab or courier service will pick up the samples and then result them for us and inform us of the results so that we can be communicating with families. That, again, is all credit to Wisconsin DHS for developing that program, designing. And they really have offered, I would say, a buffet of options for school districts to try to take advantage of or participate in, and again, all voluntary testing at this point.
Again, voluntary parent permission. Any other questions or comments?
And one more credit to our school nursing staff, who may take that on in addition to the many things that they already do.
I guess I just have a quick question.
Yes.
Kind of a silly question. What would the percentage be of students that are 11 and under in our district, anybody? That's a lot of unvaccinated students versus...
So what's the population of the middle school and the high school?
Let's see. That's a lot, just to me, that's a lot of students, too.
Seven hundred.
Twelve classes.
About 2,000?
About 8% would be...
About 20?
It'd be about 40%.
About 40% of our students?
40%.
Yeah.
So I heard 40%?
Approximately, yeah, because we have about 4,000 students and 1,200 at the high school, 900.
And middle school, yeah.
Middle school.
Okay. Other question? All right, well, thank you. This is just a report only, so we appreciate the information. And I am guessing there will be continued information or continued questions between now and the beginning of school. I think it's important to note that this is where we are right now in this time. Things may change, as has been shared. So consent agenda items, we have seven items this evening. Unless there are any items to be pulled separately and considered that way, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Rebecca, is there a second?
I'll second.
Chris, motion's been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. And then we will move on to board member reports and discussion. And I'll call on board members for any comments or committee reports they may have. And Brian is absent, so Emily?
Um... Let's see. I just am very happy with the mask optional decision. I don't know really who it was up to exactly, but I think it really gives, like, our students a chance to finally, like, go back into a school year where we know there's an outcome of something good. Like, the last time I was fully in school was normal was my sophomore year, and like, I'm graduating this year. The last time my sister was fully in normal school, she was in sixth grade, and she's about to be a freshman in high school, which is like crazy to me. And then about, like, what's normal, what's not? Like, washing hands, that's normal, wearing shoes is normal. This situation that we've been in the last almost two years is not normal. Like, that's not normal for us. Like, when we compare it to washing our hands and wearing shoes, like, it's not normal. So I don't think for, to mask our K through five students or K through 12 students, that's not normal for them. And I think that's going to be really, almost traumatizing for them when they grow up and they realize they haven't actually had face-to-face social interaction their entire childhood. So I don't know, if I was going into kindergarten with a mask on and didn't know any of the kids who I was going to school with, that'd be traumatizing for me. So... And again, like, we can look at the CDC and all those other things, and those are recommendations. It doesn't mean we have to take those recommendations. They're recommendations for a reason. You can either accept them or you don't. So that's mostly all I have.
Okay, Jennifer, Deek?
Yeah, I just want to thank all those who participated in the public participation today. It was good to hear the different perspectives. I guess that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Gary Dunlap?
I appreciate everybody coming to talking to us tonight, too. I'll make one comment about the mask, and that is that, you've heard me say it 100 times already, and that is, the masks aren't, they aren't a freedom, a personal freedom, because the masks are not on your face to protect you from the disease. They're on your face to protect other people from the disease if you contract it. So personal freedom is not a personal freedom if it affects the general public. It's like going into a theater and hollering fire or driving on the sidewalk. You might be able to do it, but it's not the right thing to do it, and it's against the law. And vaccines and masks across this country in the last six months has proven over and over and over and over again with scientific data that they help save lives. They probably saved hundreds of thousands of lives with the vaccines so far. And also, not to contradict the accurate data from the internet sites or anything, but Texas and Florida are providing 40% of the cases, COVID cases currently in the United States. Florida had over 16,000 a day, so it seems like their not use of mask and avoiding the vaccination is really helping them out a lot. They're killing a lot of innocent people down there for no reason. That's all I have to say.
All right, Gary, Anita J. Gesinski?
I wanted to thank everybody who came out and spoke tonight, too. It is, I appreciate just when they come forward, because I know it's not easy and it's nerve-wracking, as we saw some hands shaking tonight. But it's really important. I wanted to make that point before, that we don't make our decisions based on, you know, how many emails we get, how many phone calls we get, how many people show up and speak. It's, we take it into consideration, but it's not what's behind the decisions to mask or not mask, or, you know, whatever. Sometimes the rumor mills online just get frustrating to read, and it's maddening. And I have to say about the idea of personal freedom, I don't think that personal freedom has to mean that you don't care about your fellow man, your fellow human beings and infecting people. There's personal freedom and there's personal responsibility that goes along with it. And sometimes it just looks like selfishness when we just call it personal freedom because we don't want to do something. When you think of the impact it can have on thousands, millions of other people and their health, that, to me, isn't freedom, that's just kind of self-serving. So that's all I have.
Hey, thank you. Chris Low?
I just want to thank everybody for coming out and speaking tonight and for the Holman Area Foundation for the wonderful donation. I, too, I am uncomfortable with this masking being optional, especially for our younger learners. Our local national healthcare officials have indicated that we have three ways to stop this. We can mask, we can distance, and we can vaccinate. And we're essentially choosing to not do two of those things for our younger learners. We should be adhering to all three of these, stop the spread. And yes, some of our middle school students and our high school students have access to the vaccine. However, none of our younger learners, we learned 40% that just don't have access to it. I just feel it's prudent for us, especially for those younger learners, just to be masked until they're eligible to receive the vaccine. Cases are on the rise. We have this new variant, and we're not really sure what to do with it yet. I just think it's important, as us as a district, to make sure that our kids are safe before we send them back. And we don't want to see the trend be in our buildings. And we can be part of that to stop that from happening. There's nothing wrong with being cautious, was something we're still trying to learn about. You know, as a parent of a student who is immunocompromised, all students have the right to be back in school safely and have a healthy school year, so.
Thank you, Chris. And Rebecca Reber?
Just want to say thank you to the COVID response team. I know you guys do a lot throughout the year and have in the past 18, 20, 24 months or so. We appreciate, I believe, also from the parents and the families, all the emails we get. And even though we don't respond to them, we just want you to know that we do get them. I do, I'm also having a hard time with this, not masking. I wear a mask every single day in work, and I choose to wash my hands every single day because that helps protect me, helps protect the people that I work with. We always didn't wash our hands after we used the restroom, and now we do to protect other people. I wear a mask not just to protect myself, but to protect a lot, a lot of people. So I'm just also struggling with this mask issue. But again, just thanking everybody for your support and all your help keeping our students in school, so, thank you.
Well, thank you. And I, yeah, I know it's very difficult. It's a very difficult thing to do. I do know that it is following the plan, as has been shared in the past previously. But I also remember hearing from parents the importance of having our students in person in school. And someone tonight talked about that importance, and I think it was part of the presentation as well. And so I recognize and understand why the masking is optional. I would hope that people are courteous to the people who choose to wear masks because I've seen things, again, online that have not been very respectful to people who choose to wear masks. But I do hope that we take into consideration what's happening, the variant and all of that, as we move forward. I think our big goal, and I bet if I asked a number of students, would you prefer virtual education or coming in person and having to wear a mask? And I can almost guess what their preference would be. And it may come to that, where we have to make those choices. But for right now, this is the plan. And I know that you, the administration, has worked many, many hours to develop this. And, again, that variant, that stinker that's come in for, you know, to really put a cog in that, change things up. So a few months ago, it looked pretty good, and then we have this. So I do know that you consider the 4,000 students who come through our doors as your number-one priority and their safety. And so with that, I do appreciate it. But it's very hard. It's hard for the community to understand, even sometimes the language we use in sharing that information to them. It's hard for them to understand. School district, someone mentioned lacrosse, you know, and I think they've established a threshold where if there are X number of cases, then they're going to require masking. And we have chosen not to do that, and I think that's a wise thing because it could be two cases or three cases, but if they're out of the same household and they're all in one building, you wouldn't necessarily, you know, mask everything or turn everything, you know, change everything. So I am appreciating the flexibility. But I have said it over and over again, the best thing that can happen and the best way that we can guarantee, as much as we can possibly do it, is for our families to take the mitigations in the community seriously and follow those as much as possible when they're in the community. Because if they are exposed to it in the community, then the likelihood of them bringing it into the school buildings increases. So again, I would encourage people to do the mitigations as much as possible in the community and as they are socializing out and about. So that's really all that I have on that. I would mention that we do have a meeting scheduled for the 16th. The start time is at 6:00. We've changed that up a little bit. We're going to have a presentation from the leadership team about compensation and some of the data that we have related to that. And then we're looking forward to getting some feedback and information from the employee groups related to that. August 23rd is our next board meeting. And believe it or not, the 24th is the back-to-school kickoff. It's hard to believe already that that's going to happen, so. And then we, of course, have the two September board meetings. And in October, there's a regional meeting on Alaska, so if you're interested in participating in that. If there is no other business to come before the board, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Anita, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries, we are adjourned.